The county council is very mindful about the sensitivity and passionate views surrounding this year's budget. We are taking all of the thousands of views that we have heard thus far from residents very seriously. We each work for you, the people of Prince George's County. We will make our final decision about the budget by the end of May and will give very serious and balanced consideration to all parts of the county budget. At this public hearing, the county council wants to hear from you. Tonight's format is one where we listen and you communicate. Therefore, we will not engage in dialogue or question and answer. Should you have specific questions which require clarification, staff from the county executive's office, who I believe are here, as well as our county auditor, Dave Van Dyke is here somewhere, Dave, can you raise your hand? All right, so if you have questions, Dave has the answers. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm joking. I'm joking, I'm sorry. Present to address your concerns. Thank you for participating in the hearing to the town. From the Board of Education District 8, Mr. Edward Burrows, if you'd like to say some words.
Good evening. I first want to thank all the school system officials who are here for your work in our school system. You've worked all day, you decided to come out tonight. So I want to sincerely thank you for coming tonight. I've heard different arguments around this issue, and of course, I love the school system. I mean, I'm a product of the school system. I grew up here, literally. But it's important to me that I share reality with you, and that's people are struggling. And there, every week, every month, I get calls from families, from parents who are crying because they have to live with having their child displaced due to foreclosures. And so they call me to make sure that their kid is able to stay in the neighborhood school, even though they've been displaced to DC, northern Prince George's, or to Charles County. And so our families are still struggling. I sit on the nonprofit board in the county that works with a shelter, and I was shocked at how many Prince George's County public school buses showed up to that homeless shelter. And simply my message is this: What happens in the community, what happens with our families also impacts student achievement, right? You can't ignore if a mom has to work two or three jobs, she's not going to be able to be at a PTSA meeting, she's not going to be engaged. That's reality for several of our folks. And so I just wanted to say that I applaud the county executive for what he's attempting to do, but our people are struggling. I admire his intent here. I do want to say that if you really want to improve the school system, and I told him this, it's going to take more than just funding, right? You're going to have to change your culture. You're going to have to have accountability. You're going to have to have transparency. And if we want to get serious about this, yes, we can have these grand announcements. You know, changing the governance structure may or may not impact student achievement. Additional money will help, of course. Our teachers, our families deserve it. But until you change their culture, increase accountability and transparency, additional money is not going to be the end-all-be-all solution. And so I would say, and I see my time is running thin, I would love if the whole county was able to come together and sit down. And in addition to asking for more money, we talked about ways that we can be held accountable, and we can talk about ways to be more transparent. And I think right now, you know, we're asking for additional funding, but those accountability and transparency conversations have not happened.
Councilmember Kelly Porter, City of C-Placid.
Good evening, esteemed council and the esteemed citizens of the great and wonderful Prince George's County. We are in opposition, and I will be brief about this. Property tax, telecommunications taxes, and the potential energy tax increase will have a substantial impact on the individuals in our community that are on a fixed income. Residents living on a fixed income generally do not have room to pay more than their current budget allows. The proposed increases will also impact on the quality of life for low to moderate income families, senior citizens, disabled residents, and single-parent households. When the proposed was put forth with casinos in Maryland was broke through the borders, it was pitched to us that the money would go to fund schools. How much has Prince George's County benefited from the casinos that are already in place, if at all? I for one want nothing more than to see our educators and facilities for which they work have all the benefits necessary to educate our youth. However, why does the buck always have to stop on the backs of those voters who can least afford it? Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Eugene Grant, City of C-Placid.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Distinguished members of the council, must shout out to my council lady, Councilwoman Toles, thank you so very much, to the members of staff, the residents, citizens of Prince George's, a great county. I am here on behalf of the citizens and residents and businesses of a city of excellence who strongly oppose the 15.6% tax increase proposed by our county executive. Somewhere I read that in the good book, "We then that are strong ought to bear the infirmities of the weak." There are many in our county who feel as though that those who are in a position of strength, when they put together their formula in developing this budget, did not take into consideration the totality of the citizens and residents of this county. To bring forth a proposal without having public comment prior to the written documentation of the proposal is a slap in the face. It is easy to go around the country to talk about the affluency of this county, how educated we are as a county, yet you don't go to these affluent and educated people to put together your proposal. This is not the way we do business as representative government in the United States of America. When you are proposing something that is going to have such a major impact on its citizenry, you should make certain that there are hearings, that there are meetings, that you are putting together commissions to study these ideas and these proposals opposed to throwing them to us at the very last minute. I won't get into an argument about the formulas that was put together, but I will argue that in the face of putting together that argument, the people of Prince George's County was left out of the formula. They were left out when you must consider foreclosures that are going on in our county. You must consider the fact that we're coming off of a recession worse than the 1930s in this county. You are coming to a point where there are so many other issues that are confronting our people in Prince George's County, and that was not factored into the equation. I submit to this council, listen to your people. Listen to the ones that put you in the seats that you occupy today. Listen to them, for they have told you resoundingly throughout this county that they do not support it. You have asked us to give you $50 million for an economic incentive fund. You have asked us to give you support for a casino. You've asked for all kinds of support. Now, we ask you to support the residents and citizens of Prince George's County.
Thank you. Charles Pace. Just a reminder, please say your address as well.
Good afternoon, Chairman Franklin and councilmembers. I am Charles Pace from Beltsville, Maryland, while I am represented by Councilman Mary Lehman. I was here on last Tuesday, and I heard all of the testimonials, both pro and con. I don't intend to add to that, but what I would like to say, I would like to make a suggestion that if the council is successful in circumventing TRIM, I would suggest that it considers senior citizens of this county. I have been a county resident and homeowner in Prince George's County for 21 years, and I have seen some senior citizens barely getting by, and I think that one more cent of increase in real property taxes would probably cause them to have to sell their home. So I would like for you to consider putting a cap on any increases. I would even prefer that you not make an increase on any senior citizens' real property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Harrell.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Harrell. I reside at 15704 East Haven Court, Bowie, Maryland 20716. I got to be honest, I'm really, really frustrated and angry about the fact that you were even considering raising taxes. If we're paying the highest property tax in the state, what is going on and where is the money that you already are receiving? And why do you have to come to us, asking us for more money? And what happened to the funds that were going to be allocated from the casinos? I mean, and then what happens when you in fact do not improve the school system? Then what, you're going to ask us for more money?
My name is Judy Robinson, for the record. I live at 7100 Bridle Path Lane, Hyattsville, Maryland. I've been a resident since I was 23 years old, and I'm 72 now, much that I hate to admit it. I was very privileged to chair two committees in this county. I chaired the PG Citizens for Tax Reform and Term Limitation. Our committees were the reason why we have term limits. In 1996, in response to what the government did, raising property taxes and going around TRIM, we initiated what was called Question I then. It was no new taxes without your vote, Section 813. I want anybody in this room who doesn't want to educate children to stand up, please. Anybody? I didn't think so. Okay? It's not about educating children. First off, Dr. Maxwell hired 12 new administrators. It doesn't get into the classroom. We know that. We fought for it. I was in PTAs in a variety of different things, but it's not that. We said to the council in 1996, 71% of the voters, "Come to us. Make your case." And if anybody is badmouthing education in Prince George's, it's our county executive, Russian Baker. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen. I made a Freedom of Information request, which I included in my testimony to the school system. I asked them simply to pull up data on how many attorneys they had hired, outside councils in a year or two. Their answer, "We don't have the database to pull up those fees." Now, either they don't want me to get the information, or a $1.6 billion system has such an antiquated accounting system that they don't know what they're spending. Our voters said, "Take it to ballot." If Russian Baker had done that in 2014, let's see what the voters would have said. Now you have options. You're getting people calling you and raising the roof, and we are too. You know, my daughter went all the way through this system. She's a teacher in Ohio, making a third of what the teachers are in this system. Not that we don't love children, but we wanted you to ask us for the money. Tell us the pocket you were taking it out of. And I have to say what I said in 1996 and '92, this is not about color, ladies and gentlemen. I take it back, it is. But it's not black and white. We all live in this county. The lady just said it. It's green. It's the color of our money. Come to us. Trust us. Prince Georgians know what they're doing. We're not stupid.
Thank you. Michelle.
Good evening. My name is Susan Lacourse. My address is 16007 Gerald Road, Laurel, Maryland 20707. I've been a resident of Prince George's County for 30 years. I'm a substitute teacher with Prince George's County Public Schools. I work at Francis Fuge's Early Childhood Center in Beltsville. We work with preschoolers who have autism and developmental delays. I love children. If I didn't, I wouldn't be able to do my job. And I'd like to talk about the proposed property tax increase. Several years ago, casinos were approved by voters on the promise that they would increase funding for our schools. That promise turned out to be empty. Why should we expect more from this new tax? Who knows where the extra money will go in two or three years? And what will the impact of this tax be? Every homeowner will see their property tax go up by hundreds of dollars. In my neighborhood of older homes built in the 60s, we'll see a $600 increase, and even more than that as property values go up. That's huge. Property tax is by far the most inequitable kind of tax. Just because a person owns a home, it does not mean that they have cash available for politicians to take at will. That's why we have TRIM. We voters are the only ones who know how much property tax we can afford. We should be having a prolonged, open, and honest debate about a decision this permanent and far-reaching. Instead, it's been brought up at the 11th hour with very limited opportunity for public comment and no public vote. That's sneaky, and it's dishonest. PG County homeowners don't have a powerful lobby, but we do vote enthusiastically. Finding a loophole to increase our property taxes without voter approval is a betrayal of the public trust. I for one will never vote for anyone for any office who violates the spirit of our county charter by approving this tax. You, our county council members, have a very significant decision to make. We are watching you. Don't commit political suicide by approving this tax. Thank you for your time.
Tom DiNoga.
Good evening, Tom DiNoga, Laurel. First, I want to commend the many taxpayers that attended these hearings and the various town hall meetings around the county to attempt to make some of the points of criticism in a mere three minutes. These citizens have been excellent, just like Susan who just spoke and so many others. While I understand the need to give everyone the opportunity to comment, and that your budget hearings necessitate a three-minute limit, to date, there has not been a fair debate on the topic of the proposed budget and tax increase. Mr. Baker's run around the county holding faux conversations that are actually lectures only held in a format in which he controls the microphone and the agenda. He will not allow an actual conversation of the issues. Your council town hall meeting and your individual town hall meetings have also given the CEO and the administration control of the microphone, allowing lengthy statements of supposed facts while allowing individuals a mere three minutes to comment. I do want to commend those councilmembers who spoke out two weeks ago at your town hall meeting and challenged some of the information that has been disseminated. In your town hall meetings, why have you allowed a forum only for proponents and no forum for opponents to make detailed statements? Frankly, at your meeting, Mr. Maxwell gave a sermon, but little in the way of facts. And when some citizens use their three minutes to try to make points, the county executive uses his control of the microphone to dismiss their statements without allowing them to respond. Simply, this ongoing traveling circus has been and continues to be a disservice to the public. Maybe Chair Franklin, Mr. Franklin, can use his forum to allow tax opponents time to make a presentation? Or do our government leaders lack confidence to allow equal time? Summarizing my hurried statement from last week, the county is always faced with a difficult budget situation because we are relatively low-wealth jurisdiction that is limited by state law to raising revenue on wealth-based taxes. Consequently, our citizens already pay the highest total property tax, income tax, and telephone tax rates of any county in the state. And because of maintenance of effort, adopting these tax proposals will not be something that can be reversed. Low-wealth counties have difficulty funding an education budget. Still, according to MSD's Education Effort Index, our citizens are paying their fair share of our wealth as compared to the statewide average. In 2013, we had the seventh highest per pupil expenditures in the state, well ahead of wealthier counties such as Baltimore County and Anarundel County where Mr. Maxwell came from. We also pay teacher salaries on part with wealthier counties such as Howard and Anarundel. However, a look at the education budget demonstrates that the school system has not prioritized new funds to the classroom. The share of the school system budget dedicated to instructional salaries has dropped progressively to an all-time low. If the citizens were provided a fair forum to debate these issues, the low public confidence in this proposal would drop even lower. In consideration of the one-sided conversation and lack of credible information and rationale, I recommend CB 12 2007 to the council. When Jack Johnson proposed a telephone increase from 8% to 11%, the council approved the tax increase, but contingent on voter approval as required by Charter Section 813. In spite of an AG opinion stating we did not have to follow the charter, we took our oath seriously. We gave Mr. Johnson the opportunity to make his case to the public. If Mr. Baker is truly confident that his arguments are winning arguments, have him make his case to the public as the voters have set forth. Public trust in government is a very limited resource. Please do not squander this resource by increasing a regressive burden on working-class homeowners. Thank you.
All of us know the benefits that are derived from successful schools, but we are thinking, people, we do not pay for smoke and mirrors. We would rather have authentic data for what is needed to sell this plan. Students learn at different rates, they come with varied needs. Teachers and principals have different skill sets. Superintendents come with different skill sets. But magic is not one part of their kit bag. Just asking for more money without tangible, measurable benchmarks, data, and time to evaluate progress, it is not the way to go. You have heard from the residents, the problems that beset PG CPS are systemic in our entire county, and a one-shot deal strategic plan is not going to fix it in five years.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, thank you for the time to speak to you this evening. I'm a constituent of Councilman Turner's. We've served together on a Recreation Association Board. He probably has a pretty good idea where I stand on this proposed tax increase. I'm opposed. I'm incredibly opposed to this tax increase. I can only imagine the response that I would get if I went to my boss's office tomorrow and I told him, I said, "Keith, I've got an idea. You give me a 15% raise today, and I'll see about getting you some results in 2020." It probably wouldn't go over real well with him. I am a lifelong resident of Prince George's County. I was born in the county. I was educated in the Prince George's County Public School System, K through 12. I am not a prototypical, "Let me kick Prince George's County for fun" type person. I'm not. I love the county. I plan on staying in the county. But at the same time, I graduated from Largo High School in 1984. I've seen a progression of, they were called superintendents when I was in school, CEOs now come and go. Each one of them had great words to say about the things that they were going to accomplish. And in the 31 years since I've graduated, honestly, I haven't seen that progress. So now I have Dr. Maxwell telling me, "Look, if you just give me $133 million of your hard-earned money, I promise you in five years, we're going to go from 24 out of 25 to one of the top 10." Now, one of the things I haven't seen is I haven't seen the accountability mechanism. So what happens if we don't make it into the top 10 in 2020? Do I get my $133 million back? Where's the accountability mechanism? And is this council prepared to hold the school board accountable? I think you have to say you have a $1.8 billion budget. The residents of Prince George's County already pay the second-highest property taxes in the state of Maryland. And the other thing that I don't really like is I don't like the disingenuous nature of the conversation that the county executive, who by the way, I voted for twice, and I now regret doing that. I don't like the disingenuous nature of how he has approached this issue. I keep hearing him talk about 96 cents per $100 of assessed value going to $1.11. Well, actually, the true rate is $1.32 if you take into account the special taxing districts within Maryland. And if you're like me, if you live in Bowie or another incorporated municipality, you're paying a rate anywhere from 1.5 to some places like Colmar Manor approaching $2 per $100 of assessed value. So, you know, it's real money. Anyway, I'm out of time. Thank you very much. I'm opposed. I hope that you guys will not approve this.
Thank you. Dennis Suret. You're not Rob Anderson?
No.
Okay. Olu Arima?
No.
Amelia Stewart? Nope.
Thank you.
Yes, all right.
Good evening. So you guys can stop hearing my comments from the back now, that Councilmember Franklin is so used to hearing.
Yes.
Yes. And I'm here again, and I think you know why. I will not entertain any conversation in reference to this budget being about the schools. I am not going to entertain that. I grew up in PG County. I went to all of my schools in PG County, and I'm sorry, let me say Prince George's County, since we're trying to better it, right? Imagine that. So what I'm going to say is this: We said that these casinos were going to help our schools. That is not going to happen. I don't expect that to ever happen. I'll be 100 years before that actually happens, okay? In reference to our county executive, I believe that Councilmember Franklin was there when I told him. He did not deserve to retain his salary if these schools did not get fixed within the time that he was in office. Now, you've already heard their pieces that they've said about people that are not going to be able to run again sitting on this council right now. We've heard the piece about the county executive, that he's going to be out of office soon. I won't even reiterate everything that's been said tonight, because it's almost 11:00. But I will say this: I find it a slap in the face and a severe, just a severe sense of disrespect from you guys, being dishonest about where our tax money is going. If we really want to say that we love these kids and that they are our future, let's allocate this money and make it go to the right places. If we want to talk about throwing money at the school system to fix it, that's not another conversation that I'll entertain as well. And let me tell you why: Because money isn't going to fix it. Us fixing the culture of our county, that's what's going to fix our kids and fix these schools. And if we keep playing around with our schools and where this money is allocated, education, I've said it before, is the root of everything in a society. If we don't fix our education system, crime is not going to be fixed. Jobs are not going to come. They're not going to be created. We have got to get serious politicians to make serious moves that are going to benefit all of us as citizens. Because remember, if I am educated, I am less likely to rob your house. I am less likely to rob you if you are at the ATM. Let's stop allowing people to get voted in that are not going to do anything for us but serve themselves. I listened to these principals talk for the whole first half of this meeting, and it disgusted me. You know why? Because I worked at most of their schools, and I watched them get kickbacks that they don't deserve from all the things that are dysfunctional about our school system, and I'm sick of it. I'm working at a school now, and I won't name it. It's fine, y'all can find out if you look it up. I'm done with it. All of us are.
Thank you.
All right? Please, let's fix this. We all live here.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for your patience, and I want to thank my son for sitting through this. He knows his mother. If she gets mad, she gets mad. I have this budget. I want to know if all of you, all of you, have read every page. If you have not, where the fringe benefits are realigned, millions and millions of dollars for benefits, workers' comps and whatever else, realign and adjust it, and it says unrestricted on this benefit, that the appropriation comprising of the majority of this total budget can be used for any legal purpose desired by the Board of Education. That is a crime. Representation, taxation without representation in America is a crime. That boy has been with me for every vote. I stood up 3 o'clock in the morning reading this thing. This is our crime on PG County. And the homeowners who will be further going into foreclosure will be affected. The tsunami that will happen with this passing of this budget, this criminal budget, I didn't sleep at night. I read it till 3 o'clock in the morning, every page. Where the money was changed, I have a master, I know how to read a budget. I know where they take the money from and where they're going to put it. And I couldn't, that child should be at home, but he knows I won't sleep until I have to have my say, because I can't keep his roof on his head. I fought Bank of America, and I won to keep my home from foreclosure. I went to the state attorneys, Mike Gansler, to help that criminal. Now, I have to be here to fight this and other homeowners who can't speak on it. It's a tsunami that is going to weigh on this county for years to come. As a federal worker, Obama signed an executive order that we had a pay freeze from 2011. Yes, and I kept working. I got those people's disability things going and proudly did my job. But the fact is, still struggling trying to keep the home? This is a crime. It is a crime that I couldn't sleep on. It is a crime that I couldn't sleep on until I spoke. This boy should be in bed, having dinner, and going to school. But he knows his mama. I have worked on the Hill, going to congressmen, talking to them that for federal workers who are in this county had to deal with pay freezes from 2011 plus foreclosures. This is a crime. If you could sleep on it, God be praying for you.
Thank you. Is Evans here? Okay, that was our final speaker. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Evans, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What you're hearing a lot of is what I've spoken on before, which is that there is a glaring distrust of county government, of the council, of the county executive. And that is because, as they have expressed here tonight, you have teachers in PG County, and they're the third-highest paid in the state of Maryland. You have a county that is top-heavy with school administrators, not teachers, but school administrators. They know that the school is funded because every time somebody wants money, they play the education card, and because people do care, then they often vote for bonds or anything else that they think is going to get them money for education, because they think that the money will help solve the problem. But you haven't solved the problem, and people understand that PG County gets more funding from the state than any other county in Maryland. They know that we've just had a gas tax bill passed, so they're going to have in three years paying 15 cents more for gas. That's supposed to go to education. They know we've had a state lottery. They know we have casinos. They know that almost 2/3 of their property taxes go for education. And the problem is, with all this money going for education and it not being what people thought that they would get, not the status that they see other counties have, you know, it's kind of hard for people to realize that in PG County, a lot of our education is the same as in Baltimore County. And so, this is very hard for people, and so, there is no trust. And people don't, they don't want any more money thrown at a situation that they don't believe is going to help. And no one here can issue guarantees, and so, people just don't trust you. We have more taxes paid, more kinds of taxes paid by the people in PG County, probably than any other county in Maryland. So if, after I pay my state taxes, I have to take 60% of that state tax, and then I have to pay that additional 60% to PG County. People understand that. They understand, when they look at PEPCO, look at their PEPCO bills, you have an energy charge, you've got a grid resiliency charge, you've got a franchise tax, you've got a Maryland environmental surcharge, you've got an Empower Maryland charge, you've got a Prince George's County energy tax, you've got... That was a fast three minutes.
We give everybody the same amount. Thank you, Ms. Evans. Thank you. And thank you all for coming out this evening. I want to let you know that, again, written statements may be submitted for the record in addition to or in lieu of verbal testimony. Comments should be addressed to the Honorable Mel Franklin, Chairman, Prince George's County Council, County Administration Building, Upper Marburg, Maryland 20772.